Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department filed with the city clerk on March 6, 2023. Asbury Park School, they should provide all students with a comprehensive progressive education where everyone possesses skills and character to succeed in and I'm sorry, in diverse evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grillo, Ms. Lozinski, Dr. Penna, Mr. Remy, Ms. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Rogers, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Allsbury, Ms. Cook.
Please arise for the flag salute. Before we open up the public participation, I'm going to read a little statement. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of this meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of this meeting. Members of the public who wishes to make a public comment must be recognized by the proceeding officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if as if vocal. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow these forego rules and/or interfere with the orderly operations of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting. At this time, I open up public participation. At this time, I will close public participation.
Good evening. Could I have a motion for all items C1, number 1, 2, 3? Moved by Ms. Cook. Second by Ms. Lozinski. Well, so that's okay. We're going to go to questions and comments.
If Mr. Hastings could just go over or Dr. Adams, the budget a little bit and what all these numbers mean briefly and the implication of S2 to our district and what everyone's been dealing with. You can't hear me? It's on. Can you hear me now? Oh, they're not really sensitive today. Would have Mr. Hastings or Dr. Adams explain a little bit about the budget and what the district's been going through to try to make sure our children are receiving a thorough and efficient education with all the implications of S2.
So tonight's meeting you have before you in the resolution that we just moved, the approval for the board, from the board, for the superintendent and the business administrator to submit our tentative budget. So this is a tentative budget, it's not the official complete budget per se. This budget will be submitted after approval to the county, be reviewed by the county superintendent, the county business administrator. They will go through our budget, they will compare it to the requirements put forth by the state in terms of what's in there, descriptions, different components that have to be in there and included. They'll put questions back to the superintendent, the state monitor, and myself to reply to, to make corrections if necessary. And then at a certain point in the next two, three weeks, they'll issue a final approval for that budget. That budget then has to come back before the board in a window of April 24th through May 8th, and that will be the final budget. And that budget will be presented to you, we'll do a PowerPoint, and we'll go through the various components of the budget in a little more detail and have the board ask questions and then vote on the final budget, which will then be submitted back to the state and to the city for taxes and those purposes. What we've provided to the board today are sort of three different bits of information. So on the white sheet you have there, which is a draft document, we've started with the impact of S2 and what the district of Asbury Park has been experiencing over the last several years. So you can see from that top chart, over the past 10 years, from 2013 school year to the 2024 school year, the district has lost $34,492,663 in state aid. So that's $34,492,663 in state aid. Significant impact on that is the S2 bill that Ms. Lozinski mentioned. The S2 bill attempts to clawback funds from districts that have been receiving hold harmless aid. It also looks at the adequacy budget. The adequacy budget again is comprised of really two components. One is what the state, according to their model school system, says Asbury Park should be running the district on. That number is about $42 million. They then look at the district, the city, the ratables, the income of the city, of the community, and they come up with what they determine to be the local fair share, or basically what property taxes should be raised to support that $42 million school budget. Right now, again, they're looking at $42 million approximately as the budget to run the district in a thorough and efficient manner, and they're looking at the city, the community, to contribute $26.7 million to that budget. They then do the quick math and come up with what the state aid should be based on those calculations. And the state aid based on those calculations is about $14.7 million. Now, when the S2 bill was implemented back in 2020, 2019, 2020, the district was not collecting close to its local fair share. So we were collecting about $10 million less than what the state was saying the town should be contributing. So what they've been doing over the past several years under the S2 bill is driving down the state aid based on these calculations over time, over a formula, where the first year they took about 13%, then they took about 25% of the overaided amounts. And so they've been reducing our state aid over those past several years, clawing back the adjustment aid or the hold harmless aid and making adjustments also based on enrollments. So that's how we've wound up at approximately $34 million in losses over the past several years. At the same time, the district has been putting forward budgets with increases in taxes to make up for that $10 million difference. So the board, various boards over that time period, have put forth budgets that have increased taxes in order to close that gap and hopefully do it in a fair and sort of methodical way, so that no one particular year, there's a particularly heavy hit on the local taxpayers. So that's where we are in terms of state aid. We have another year coming, next year, where we look to see probably the final cut according to S2, and again, we expect that to be in the millions of dollars in terms of lost aid again. Some of the things we've done to try to offset those losses and minimize the impact has been using our fund balance, so in other words, not spending the entire budget during any given year, so that we have some additional funds to offset those losses in the coming year. And through the superintendent, through the state monitor, and other administrative folks, through the unions, both the teachers' union and the supervisors' union, the district has been looking at efficiencies and how to create efficiencies within the district to help again reduce costs. So all those things go into trying to meet the loss in aid with a minimal impact on the educational system here and the education that we're offering to the students of Asbury Park. If you look at the left, I've got here some budget drivers. So for 2023, our operating budget was $49.5 million. We're looking at 2024 based on the revenues at $50 million. Of that $50 million, we're looking at about $21 million in state aid. We're looking at about $6.7 million in a one-time award of aid called Equity Aid, and that was born out of the ARP and federal monies that were coming to the district and the state's requirement to not reduce funding to schools. So that was a one-time aid payment that the district received of about $6.7 million. We carried forward a surplus of about $625,000. We have other revenue sources where you'll see on the agenda, we're withdrawing funds from our maintenance reserve, and we're also receiving extraordinary aid, which again goes to offset some special education excess costs and some semi or Medicaid aid to the district. And then the final number there for 2024 is the local fair share that's being put forward at $21.8 million as the local tax that will be collected for the 2024 school budget. Below that, you'll see we have some impact items or increases in our 2024 expenditures. The most significant there is salaries that we offset last year, or this year basically, to the amount of about $5.4 million using grant funds. Those grant funds were a one-time offering, so those funds need to be made up from other sources in the 2024 budget. We're looking at significant increases in regular and special ed transportation. We've all seen since COVID has subsided that getting bus drivers, getting routes, getting full service from the various bus companies has been extremely hard, extremely difficult, as well as getting substitutes and cafeteria aides and other sort of part-time positions filled by these various vendors, which has created the need for them to increase pay and their costs in order to attract folks. So we're going to see an increase in our special ed and regular ed transportation to the tune of about $1.5 million. Asbury Park, along with many other districts, is part of the state health benefits system. The increase in January in those costs was 15%. So the state health system increased our premiums across the state by about 15%. And then the other increase we have is our increase in charter tuition. So the charter schools have been granted permission to open additional high school grades, and that's been pulling from some of our students, and that's increased charter tuition overall to about $12.5 million, or an increase year over year of about $1.6 million. So those are items that have gone into the budget for the 2023 budget that now are being increased by those amounts in the 2024 budget. And as you can see, most of those items, we don't have significant control over. The crucial and, you know, question that's most often asked is, this $21.8 million in increases, what does that look like for local taxpayers? So you have a chart there of what the increases are for various homes, based on 300, 400, 500,000 dollar assessments, up to $700,000. We're looking at an increase of about nine cents per hundred dollars of assessed value from last year. So if you look, the increase on a $300,000 home would be about $255 annually, or about 70 cents a day. For a $400,000 assessment, you're looking at a $340 increase, or about 93 cents a day. And if you go up to 700,000, you're looking at about $595 for an annual increase, or about $1.63 per day. The average assessment in Asbury Park is $524,426. That's an annual increase of $445, or about $1.22 per day. With that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent and/or take any questions that you may have.
Can you give us a timeline of when this budget has to be passed? So the community knows.
The window for passing the final budget, and we have a meeting scheduled on May 4th, which will include the PowerPoint presentation and additional details of the finalized budget.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I couldn't hear you that well. There's cross talk. Can you say it again?
Sure. So the window for approving the final budget is April 24th to May 8th, and we've scheduled our meeting for May 4th, Thursday, May 4th, for the approval of the final budget.
Right now, are we going to, I just want to make it clear that these tentative increases, the impact increases. Right now, there's no other opportunity to get state adjustments or any other funding to help offset these costs.
No, the state, the governor gave his budget address on February 28th. Two days or 48 hours after he gives his address, the state is required to release their state aid numbers. So we've received our state aid numbers on March 1st, I'm sorry, March 2nd, and those numbers included the $20,702,767 of state aid that's being contributed towards our budget. Now, I've seen in the newspaper, there's talk of various things, emergency aid and some other things that are out there, but again, none of that has been finalized, none of that is set, so we'd have to abide by the numbers that have been provided because these are the official numbers today.
The one thing I wanted to say is that it's incredible that we're almost cut $8.5 million, and our costs have gone up $8.8 million. And that's not even costs we're in control of, that's just cost of living in this state. So it's like, it's incredible.
So I have a couple. Can you hear me? Okay. In terms of the state health benefits plan, from what I'm hearing, there's a lot of school districts and municipalities that are kind of jumping ship from the state health benefits plan. I'm wondering whether this is something that we need to explore, so we're not kind of stuck, because it's almost like the same thing that we see with enrollment, you know, with our schools. The more entities kind of aren't or don't participate anymore in the state health benefit plan, the rates go up for everybody else. I'm wondering whether this is something we should be exploring as a board.
So when we talk about the benefits, that's tied into salaries. So that's also something right now, we're under current agreement with the associations, so that's something that has to be negotiated. As we look at the cost of healthcare, you know, around the country, that's not a cost that is decreasing. So a lot of times when we look at our brokerage conversations annually, we also price compare to what the package is per a family, or a single, or the various levels of individuals that would need healthcare. And that, whether it's the state plan, and that's negotiated, so you would know that most of those have a larger contingency of districts, so there's greater opportunity for discounts. So when we go out to private brokers, not necessarily be able to cover that. So those are all parameters outside of the initial parameter in terms of, right now, healthcare is already a negotiated agreement between our current associations.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, our claims are too high for us to probably go out and have another insurance company pick us up.
Well, I couldn't prematurely answer that without looking at some of those other variables. And so I would go to say primary right now. The reason why that's not an option on the table is because we're presently under contract, excuse me, under agreement with both the administrators' association and the teachers' association.
And just for comparison, the charter tuition, how much has it gone up from our expenditure last year? Do we have that?
1.6.
Yeah, so our initial budget.
No, I mean, like, what was the, just for, what was last year's total?
So last year, charter school tuition was approximately, I would say, $11 million. At the beginning of '23, this school year, we had budgeted about $11.1 million, based on their estimates.
Right.
Next year, the state gives us that number that we must budget, and that number is $12.6 million for the three charter schools.
All right. Looks like Ms. Waters is earning her $133,000 a year. What's she saying?
Right now, we salaries no longer grant funded. So the community knows what type of staff we're looking at that needs to be funded in this category.
So last year, we budgeted through ESR funds about 55 staff to be covered through, I believe, 6, 6.9, in terms of the ESR coverage for staff, excuse me, 5.4. And so, well, excuse me, 5.4. And so with that, when we look at the monies in terms of the one-time equity aid, that's really if you're a gambler, that's a push in terms of covering those staff that we would have not been able to provide salaries and benefits for.
But what type of?
All staff, instructional staff, which was outlined in our ESR.
So also, this is a mandatory item that has to be funded, not only after this year, but continually. So it's not a, it's the one-time grant, so people need to know that this is going to be continual, that needs to be funded.
So I think the key thing that Mr. Hastings has outlined in this one sheet for you is the history of the, once the S2 bill hit, but also the request of funds from the district to the local municipality to continue to be on pace with its contribution. If you look at last year, we were about $9 million under. If you go back the year prior, it was probably 12. If you go back prior, and then you start compounding that over the course of a 10-year window from 2012, 2013 school year to 2023, 2024, where you have an excess decrease of That is a significant decrease in the state funding as well as the offsetting of the local contribution. So if you take over just from 2017 up until last year, somewhere in terms of the difference between what we were collecting from the local fair share is about $60 million over the course of time. Right? So when you look at just this year, we are still $5 million with the request of $21,899, excuse me, $21,899,447 dollar increase, we are still almost $6 million short of what it does take to offset the cost of fully providing our students with the funding that S2 has outlined. That's not the district requesting it, that's the S2 and the state calculation on what is required to offset the difference between what we have been getting and now what we're requesting. So even with this $21 million request, which is a $6 million increase from last year, which was still a $9 million difference than what we were getting. So when you think about us offsetting $5.4 million through ESR funds, we also had to put off certain projects and upgrades to providing services to students and/or programs for students. So when we think about it right now, if we were to increase to the full capacity of $26 million, which we should rightfully be funded, we would not and would be able to, excuse me, would not be looking at reductions, and we would be able to provide additional services and resources to our students. So that is the dilemma. Right? Chronologically, we have been under putting, under expecting the contribution that we should have been getting all along, and we've been making cuts in order to make that difference. Now we're at the tail end of what we can offer, we basically don't have any more fat to cut. So, and we're still looking at, again, a $6 million difference according to what S2 has said the local contribution should be going into this year.
Can we make sure, you know what? This sheet that has all this information, can we put this on the website or online or somewhere where folks can see it? Because we're seeing it right here, but a lot of people aren't going to see it. I don't think the folks online are going to see it unless it's up on digitally, but I think it's important that folks see kind of what S2 is doing to us and the charter schools. I thought with the health benefits, it was where, as long as we could provide a similar service, that we could switch at any time, but I thought that was in, I went to.
So the typical, the typical term is equal or better?
Equal or better, right. Because I went to the, yeah.
But the ability for the district, for any district, to go out and solicit better premiums is dependent upon the experience factor of that district. So companies are going to look at what, basically what the district has cost the company in healthcare, what services they've had to provide, and whether it's beneficial for them to take on our district or any other district based on what the premium should be. So they look at experience factor. So the rule of thumb sort of is, if you're between 90, 95% of your premium in terms of costs, you're attractive to outside clients. If you're over that, if you're in the high 90s or over 100 in terms of that number, based on the average costs of a district on healthcare, then you're not going to get a better deal, if you will. So the other problem is, districts that have better experience will leave the state program, and that leaves a larger group of higher-cost districts. So that starts to sort of spiral, and then that cost is just going to continue to be driven up because you don't have the lower-cost districts offsetting some of the higher cost. So we've put in to the state to ask for our experience over the past three years, and we'll look at that, that was discussed, I believe, in finance, in the finance committee with Ms. Lozinski and the other members, and it was discussed with our broker as well, and we're looking at that. But, you know, again, as of today, this is where we are.
And as of 6:30 today, we haven't heard anything about this emergency aid that Senator Gopal is trying to get from the governor, right? Okay.
I just had one other question in reference to the discussion about the amount of money that we supply to the charter schools. In the DOE's infinite wisdom, I guess, in approving a third high school for our 1.4 square mile city, do you have an estimate of how much additional funding that is, or how many students that the district will lose or could lose to the high school? Do you have any ideas, how many seats? Just a question.
I believe in the application that the charters have made to the state that were approved, they were looking at approximately 60 students, 66 students for 11th and 12th eleventh and twelfth grade, and those sixty-six students would be pulled from neighboring districts typically due to location and, you know, ability to travel there.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six?
Sixty-six, eleventh, sixty-six, twelfth.
Per grade?
Yes.
So that's sixty-six per grade times four for a high school.
Right now, they're opening the eleventh and twelfth, so I believe the eleventh is open now, and they'll add twelfth next year, so those eleventh graders could continue on.
So, uh, I, I wanna, I wanna, uh, kinda sum this up. So with the S, S two formula, over thirty-four million is cut from this district. Now we're looking at the state, I mean, the municipality, uh, leveling up, and their expectation is supposed to be at least twenty-six million to, to, uh, finish this budget. The taxpayers in this city, and we have to look at everybody, and we know we're gonna have to have conversations outside because we have people who are fixed incomes, seniors, uh, we're, we're building multimillion-dollar, uh, condos that aren't paying into our school district. The increase in charter schools, which, um, if we, we have the best product, we should be getting those kids back. So one of the things we need to do is push for that. And one of the most important issues is that this budget has to meet the culture and the climate of any other district in the state that has money. There should be no difference between us and anyone else on how we educate our kids. So I believe that we need to make a strong effort together to make sure we have the best budget that is going to fit our students in this district. And that way, we're gonna have to sit down, if we have to have meetings, if we have to have discussions, because I was on the other side of that table, and we have to explain exactly what is actually going on. So the effort that we have to put into this budget, is it more about discussion, but it should be more about solutions and how we get there?
Yeah, can I ask something? I know this sounds like a stupid question, but what happens if we vote no on this tentative budget right now? Does anything happen? Well, I, I mean.
But it's only tentative.
I'm saying, well, the reason I ask is just because it seems like there's stuff out there still that needs to be negotiated, at least, or is, is in the mix of getting negoti, is getting negotiated, right? With this hopeful, hopefully we get this emergency funding that'll fill this gap and help us with the S two money that we took out. What harm is it to just hold off and just have another meeting next week and then adopt on it?
Well, the, I don't know if you can hear me.
I can hear you, I can hear you.
The filing, excuse me, the filing date is the twentieth.
Okay.
And that's a date that is issued to every school district in the state of New Jersey, so, um, that date should be met. This is tentative, so if the funding you're referring to were to come before now and May fourth, when you have your final adoption, this budget can be changed to reflect that. So basically, you have well over a month, uh, the whole month of April in which to make adjustments if, uh, as I say, that funding becomes a reality. Certainly, everybody would like to see that happen, but there, as you well know, because I know that a couple of you are, are, um, very interested and follow politics, uh, this is a very political issue in the state, and not just urban district representatives are going to be voting on this question. It's going to reflect the entire legislature to come back up and tell the governor that they want a different budget, which is something I can't remember ever happening, but that doesn't mean it can't. So my advice to you, since it's your, it is your budget, the board's budget, would be to pass it, understanding that it can change between now and then, and then follow up with what Mr. Rogers said in setting up meetings, uh, with council, with civic groups to enlighten them as to the, uh, the reasons for the increase and what the budget is all about. I don't, I have been in on the kind of preparation that went into this, and I can tell you that I, I don't think there's a thing in the district that hasn't been looked at or considered. But that doesn't mean obviously that it can't change. If you look at this budget, unlike many other kinds of budgets, the problem here is not the expenditures, because when you look at the size of the budget compared to what it was, it has gone down considerably. The problem is on the revenue side of the budget, and that is the side that's taking the beating. Usually, as I say, it's reversed, like your home budget. You, you, you find out how much you have coming in first, and then you set up your priorities.
Right.
The state doesn't work that way with it, unfortunately. And I, I, Joe, your suggestion about the insurance certainly is going to be looked at. Let me just say two things about that. One, a fifteen percent increase with the healthcare is not that high. Uh, I, I know when I say that, that, you know, yeah, it's high. It, it fifteen percent is high, but, and secondly, um, if the district were to change, it can't do that, like, just overnight. There are only a couple times a year when that can be done anyway. I think one of them is January, and is it May or June? And they open what they call the open enrollment, and at that time is the only time that you can change carriers anyway, so, um, and it would be too late, uh, for May, so it would have to go to January, uh, of next year, and, uh, that would take some doing. So, uh, everything is being looked at, but I can understand Mr. Rogers saying he, he wants to know that, he wants to be certain and comfortable, and he wants the citizens of Asbury Park to know that, which is, which is a fair request. That's what should happen, that's what this is all about. So, um, you know, not approving it won't do much right now.
No, I understand that. I, well, that's why I asked about the deadline.
Yeah.
What would happen to us if the deadline passes? Like, what, like, let's say, for whatever reason, March twentieth gets here, and the deadline passes, and we don't have an, an approved, an adopted tentative budget? I, I wanna hear, I understand.
Well.
But I, but I wanna hear, so the public hears it, like, what happens to us? Do we get thrown in jail? Do we, do we get, you know?
No, no, most likely, I would have to be called on as a monitor in your district to make the decision as to whether to overturn the board, uh, or support the decision of the board. Because you have to have a budget, that's, I mean, you have to have a budget of some kind.
I understand that, but it's a tentative budget, so.
I, I know you do, I don't mean to suggest that you don't, but, um.
Joe, you asked the same question last year, I think.
Mm-hmm.
I think you asked the same question.
I ask it every year. Because I, I still, you know, I, you know, to me, it's something where, um, I mean, this is tough, and honestly, if, let's say that this emergency aid, let's say that, that some sort of deal comes through, and, uh, we're able to, to get some sort of deal with the governor's office, right? It has to go to public, like, to a public hearing in Trenton, right? That's usually how it works with these, with the budget, you go and there's public hearings and everything. And I would tell anyone that's listening and anybody on the board to join me in going to Trenton and speaking out about getting more funding, more state aid funding back to Asbury Park schools, um, so we don't have to go through this, right? I mean. I, I'm sorry, I, hey, I'm sorry. Mrs. Zinski, Ms. Salisbury, my hearing, my hearing is gone, I have to, I can only hear this, I'm sorry.
The state is aware that it has to come through by a certain time, uh, in order for, number one, your taxes to be struck is, I think it's July, what's the tax, July fifteenth, is it, the last tax, uh, time that the city can, can change the tax rolls? So all of those things are in play, and the state is aware that any emergency funding for all districts will have to be handled at the same time. So if it's going to come through, it'll come through for everybody, and it will be reflected, I would hope, in time for them to, to affect this budget.
The other thing, um, just to add context, last year, the, uh, one-time equity aid, we did not receive notice of that until about July. So when you think about the reduction that we took on last year, this six point six million dollars was not made available to us until July. So, and that's to begin this new fiscal year, right? So, um, when you think about the proposal of those conversations, um, that may happen, that's not going to make an impact until after even the final budget is, uh, presented and voted on. Um, so those adjustments may be made, but if you look at the funds that were provided to us this year in terms of the six point six, that's being utilized for next year, right? So you, you also have to just understand that that money is not like a direct deposit from, you know, Uncle Sam that's gonna hit your bank. This money is coming through a very arduous process, and it's not only impacting Asbury Park, but those funds, whatever that pool of funds the state comes up with, has to be allocated throughout the state, um, equitably as they see fit. So we don't know what any monetary amount we are going to get. If you think about our cuts, last year, we had an eight point four million dollar cut, right? Um, so this six point six that we received is, you know, not holding us, um, whole, so to speak. So I would just, you know, reiterate what Mrs. Morris has said in terms of, um, the monies may come, but we're not sure of those amounts, and, um, once we're able to make the necessary, um, adjustments, if those funds do come in the time between the next month or, let's say, six to eight weeks, we can, we can move from there. And that's what we've been working on, this process, um, daily since we received our financial numbers.
Again, I would, I would say, just in the past couple of years, from what I've seen from other school districts, um, when Red Bank was, you know, in their eyes, not getting their fair, fair share and the correct funding for their school district, we had teachers, we had administrators, we had parents, we had school board members, not we, they, had all these folks from the community organize, go to Trenton, and literally go to and speak publicly and meet with every legislator to make sure that they got their, their funding. And we haven't done that in the past. I hope that if this does, if this deal does get striked, or if this deal does happen, and we can go and speak publicly, that everybody, including parents, including property owners, including, you know, elected officials, that we all go to Trenton together and make sure that Asbury Park gets the funding that they're supposed to, that, that is required, because this is just not sustainable. It's completely unsustainable, and what's gonna happen is it's gonna drive more families out, and, I mean, I'm speaking to the choir here, but it's important that folks know that we empathize, that this is gonna drive more families out of Asbury Park. It almost drove my family out of Asbury Park, and, um, it, it's, it's something where if we don't go to Trenton ourselves and put bodies in front of legislators and in front of the folks that make these decisions, come public, speak, you know, public session time at these budget hearings, they're not gonna listen to us. So we're a square-mile town, unless we get in their face and explain the damage that this is doing to our kids, to, to people in the community, that this is just gonna increase gentrification, we're not gonna get, we're, we're gonna deal, have to deal with this again and again and again. So I, I mean, I thank Senator Gopau with what he's doing, but man, this is, this is a huge, this is huge. Not that we didn't know that this was happening, but, you know, people that I talk to go, I don't envy your position in, in Asbury Park. I'm like, well, we're gonna just try to fight this as much as we can.
Um, I completely, um, understand that, and what we've been told repeatedly is that until we are at the full capacity of the local contribution, the state is not going to budge in terms of the allocation of state funds that, um, they will provide to Asbury Park. And that has come from, um, almost everyone that we have talked to in preparation for the budget over the last several years. Have they looked, they always go back to the S two formula, and they look at what we are receiving from our, uh, local contribution. And so when you look at that, and that's offset by another five million dollar difference, the conversation has always been, go back to your local municipality. And the issue, if you think about going back to some of those budget hearings before, from some of the others, non-Month County, uh, legislators, their comments were, they are not in favor of their tax dollars funding the education in Asbury Park. They want their local taxes to be contributed and staying in their local community, which hence led to the S two formula and the insistence on that. So as long as we are underfunded at the local level, they're gonna point us back, no matter if we bring, uh, signs, the entire busload of everyone along Fourth Avenue, they're going to look at what our contribution has been, and they're going to tell us to look at the S two formula, and they're gonna, you know, point us back, because that's been the conversation that we have had, right? Rightfully so, unfairly so, but that has been the position since we were the poster child, and I say we, although I wasn't here, but we, we, the poster child for waste. But when you look at losing thirty-four million dollars over a ten-year span, I would say, I would ask any district comparable our size, comparable our issues, comparable our socioeconomics and our academic needs to fathom a thirty-four million dollar cut. And then still try to provide an adequate and thorough, efficient education for the students and the families in this community. So it is a great conversation to have, it is a great understanding to provide, but until we truly understand the position that the state is going to take and has been adamant about, and it's not lost on the fact that we have sustained significant cuts. And our cuts here in Asbury Park, I can't and won't compare to a neighbor like Red Bank or to any other district because their academic issues are not the same, their student challenges are not the same, and for some parts, their communities are very homogeneous. And so when we're looking at the significant academic challenges that we have, we were just roasted a couple of meetings ago about having single-digit instruction, right? You look at ten years, reduction of thirty-four million dollars, and when you look at the presentation that Mr. Hastings put on earlier in the school year, and looked at the actual percentage that's actually going to teaching and learning, I would ask you to find out if those same almost, what was it, three million going actually to teaching and learning out of a four million dollar budget is what other districts are also providing. That's not salaries and benefits, that's consumables, that's field trips, that's our instructional programs, that's our dual enrollment program, that's our CTE programs, that we're all funding off of a small part of that pie. So when we think about the impact of this budget, and we think about the impact on the day-to-day instruction of the students that we provide services for, not those students who are at charter schools, those families have opted for those services, okay? There's nothing that we can do or say about that, right? They're there. We still have to, as a district, provide the funding for them. We still have to, as a district, provide the funding for them, right? Because there's still taxpayers in the city, right? And we're talking the feeding districts, not only Asbury Park, but Neptune and Long Branch or whatever, those communities that have to provide for those students. But when we talk about the need and the difference in the funding, we're going, we keep getting brought back to the starting point of, we're not increasing until you are at a flat level with what you should be getting, all right? And I know I kind of talked around about it, but I think it's very, you know, it's very important that we have this conversation with the understanding that even last year, we were $9 million short. Had we received the $9 million that we should have, the $8 million cut wouldn't have made a difference. We wouldn't have had to support 55 staff members through our ESSA funds and put off projects and things of renovating our buildings, which are very old, which HVAC systems and other upgrade. So we're contemplating not doing certain projects that are going to impact instruction, like upgrading our library at the high school, our science labs, materials and resources that actually impact and improve instruction. So when we're thinking about 70 cents, that's a bag of potato chips. 93 cents, that's a Snickers bar. A dollar sixteen, that's a burger at McDonald's. On this list of the daily increase, you can't even go to Chick-fil-A. So when we start thinking about the impact of this, whether it's $255 annually or $595 broken up every day to a $0.63 a day, aren't the students in this community worth a $0.63 a day? Aren't the students in this community worth 70 cents a day? If you went into your car right now and just searched on the mats on your floor, you would find money in your ashtray that would equate some of these daily increases. We're not asking for $30 a day. We're not asking for you to take us to the Ruth Chris and give us, you know, an à la carte, all-you-can-eat. We're asking for the bare minimum at a $300,000 home, 70 cents a day, less than a bag of potato chips. You can't even go to the aisle of ShopRite and grab the candy off of the side for anything less than these numbers that are here daily a day. Not one thing. Not a cup of coffee at Starbucks, not even at Dunkin' Donuts. But our children are worth that, and we're still shortchanging it by $5 million. The district has been taking the cut on the chin every year. This is not a very popular decision, but when we've been shortcutting for years and years and years, at some point, you can't keep kicking the can down the road. So whether that's a hard conversation to have with some of the homeowners, that's an even harder conversation to tell our students, we can't go on field trips. That's an even harder conversation to say, you know what, we have to make copies of consumables because we don't have enough to purchase them. We've consolidated buildings, we've reduced staff, we've done everything measurable that we can do, but when you look at the balance sheet, the revenue that is coming in is not meeting the expenses, the fixed expenses that we have no control over.
Dr. Arms, you missed one, you missed one thing, though. The one silver bullet that will bring back state aid is what? Enrollment. And we've got to do a better job at marketing ourselves, because the only thing that's going to bring back state aid is, and, and to bring some of the, this money back to us, is that people got to enroll their kids in the school district to increase enrollment. And I know sometimes it's, sounds hypocritical, because my, my kid didn't go to the school district for eight years, you know, she's going to be going to the high school next year, and, you know, hopefully, fingers crossed, in the Dream Academy, you know? But I think the one, the only thing that is, it comes even close to a silver bullet, after all the hoopla and all the numbers and all the bag of chips and Starbucks coffee costs that we hear every year, Ms. Gray said the same thing, and Dr. Replet, you say the same thing, and you're right, our kids are way, worth way more than that, my kids way worth way more than that, is to increase enrollment in the schools, and decrease enrollment in the charter schools, and decrease enrollment in other places. So I'm, I don't know, look, I'm going to do my part and try to spread the gospel, you know, of, of Asbury Park schools, and, you know, we are going to have to have difficult conversations, and we said that we were going to at the, at the finance committee meeting, right? We're going to meet with the city, we're going to start, I don't know if you've already emailed people, Ms. Ms. Lizinski, but if, you know, we got to meet with the, the city manager, we got to meet with, with our legislators and, and work through this. And then, again, I know you say that it's, they're going to do whatever they want, no matter if we go there or not, but I still think that folks, this is still real money for a lot of people, and in some cases, it's not just $600 for a $700 owner, it's compounded into the, into the thousands and thousands and thousands, more than what they're paying now. And all of us, you're right, it's not popular, so we need to go to the state, and we need to not demonstrate, but speak out and speak about Asbury Park and what's going on here, so, that's all.
If I may, I'll just take two seconds, I know we're kind of beating a dead horse here. The one thing is that, you know, taxpayer, when I look at all the different state aid figures throughout the state, who got money and who didn't get money and who's getting cut, you know, the larger of an area received over $100 million, and they pay less per property, pay less in school tax than we do. And that's why I have a real concern about this formula and how they, you know, they, they determine who gets 100 and something million, who gets the 17 million, who gets the 19 million, when all of the urban areas are similar in property tax that we pay. So that's just a hard, hard pill to swallow on the other side, yes. Our students deserve better, our students deserve a thorough and efficient education, and I wish people would start reviewing about S2 and, and the implications of not just the, the districts that are getting cut, but the districts that are receiving money that are still raising taxes. So it's like, we're never going to catch up, because we're always going to have to raise taxes, because they don't have to raise taxes, or they still do and got, and then receive more money. So it's, it's just a conundrum, and I don't understand how logically they even came up with this formula that's really what they say is fair, because it's not.
I forgot about the school districts. Take a look, when you go in the budget, take a look at Bergenfield Domino Club, and see how much the Bergenfield Domino Club got in funding from the state. Just take a look.
Thank you. So we have all items C1, number one through number three. Ms. Cook? Ms. Lizinski? Mr. Grillo?
No on one, yes on two, and no on three.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Salisbury? Thank you, motions pass.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.